Okay, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Harold here, Mr. Pico, Mr. Valley, Mr. Velardo, Mr. Yagnum, Mr. Muscatello, Mrs. Sharpe.
Here.
We have a question.
Sunshine Law, this is to advise that the general public, this is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act. Stanhope Board of Education, located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. The mission statement, the Stanhope School District, in partnership with the community, commits to provide a quality, comprehensive education for all learners with equal emphasis on academic excellence and citizenship through values, respect, and service. Our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovative, curious, compassionate, globally-minded learners equipped with knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better future.
Okay. Presentations.
We have two pretty brief presentations. Feel free to stop me, ask questions if you, you know, just need clarification. For most of you, you've heard this every year, at least once or twice a year. The first is the HIV self-assessment. This is a self-assessment that we need to do as a district at the end of a school year, where we measure eight core elements that measure programs, approaches, training on policy and procedure, curriculum and instruction, personnel and reporting for this year. Based on all the evidence that we collected, we scored a 77 out of 78 possible points. And this is something that was submitted via the NJ DOE Home Room in June. The second is the Student Safety Data System, most notably known as the SSDS, formerly EBVRS. This reports incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, restraint, and seclusion, alleged HIBs, confirmed HIBs, HIV trainings, and programs. For this past year, this is something that's reported at mid-year and at the conclusion of the school year. For the total year, we had six incidents of violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and HIV confirmed. We had two incidents of restraint, zero seclusion. And we had 12 HIV trainings and 19 HIV programs that were reported. And that's all the data that I have. Does anybody have any questions on either of those two?
No questions.
Just, would you happen to know, year over year? How we, what they were last year and what they are this year, year over year?
For the, for SSDS or for the self-assessment?
SS, the one with the actual incidents?
Not off the top of my head. It's definitely something that I can compile. And it should be pretty easy because it's all within the same system. So, yeah, that's something that I can put together for you guys. I'll put, I'll go back as many years as I can.
All right, next section on here is correspondence. Department of Education, CUSAC placement, if you want to briefly touch on that. We did a few times, but.
Yeah, we've gone over this quite a few times, but it's now, now official because we got the letter that we did pass our CUSAC monitoring. The only indicator in question was instruction and programming. You need an 80 to pass. We scored exactly 80. And the reason for that is it measures, it gives a certain amount of points for test scores. All of the others, three of the others, we scored 100. I believe we got a 96 in governance, which were all tremendous scores. And as I've stated a couple of times, we were only one of two districts in the county that actually passed CUSAC. And we were able to, we are able to avoid having a corrective action plan for the next couple of years. So, that's, that's pretty exciting.
Questions or comments? The other two items in correspondence were thank you notes from Dominic and Charlie as part of our student correspondent committee.
I always think that's well-appreciated when you look at those and it just shows a sign of respect by young people.
We received at least, we received at least one more that didn't make this agenda. We'll have some for August.
Okay, back to you, secret attendants report.
All right, so we have zero HIV investigations and zero suspensions since our last meeting. However, I do have a couple of updates in terms of HIV. We, Ms. DiCataldo and I participated in a demo demonstration today for a program called Hipster. Hipster is more commonly used in some larger districts. It, it provides ease in reporting incidents of HIV or suspected incidents of HIV. Most notably, something that we were looking for, something that came through with our student advocates last year, a level of comfort when reporting anonymously. So, it's, I don't, it's not an app, but it's an online portal where students, parents, staff can report using the same 338 form that's required. That was the main thing that we asked them to do the demonstration on. But they also showed us all of the other, I guess, abilities that the program has in terms of through the investigation, it allows you to track everything that you've done and timestamp it so that if it's ever questioned, you know, when did, right now, our reports are self-created and our only timestamps are our handwritten dates that we put next to our signatures, which can be questioned, you know, understandably. This does timestamp everything. It ties in with our Genesis Student Information System. So even when we, we pull up a specific student, that student information, the demographics are preloaded. And I think what is another great benefit is it allows us to track the history of that student, not just as an aggressor, but also as a victim, right? It'll pop up, they showed an example, and they used the same person as their demonstration, right? They put the person in as a victim and it says, "Alert, this person has been involved as a victim in 67 HIV investigations," just because they used that same one over and over. But it's just that, that next level, right, of, of making sure that you're not missing something. You're not missing a trend, you're not missing a repeat victim or a repeat aggressor. So at the end, I said, "All right, this is all wonderful. What's it going to cost us for a small district?" They said it's, it's based on student enrollment. I asked, "How many students?" I said, "310." He chuckled and said, "It's $500 for the year," which to us was a no-brainer. So that is something that we're going to move forward with. And, you know, we'll get the necessary training, get the information out to the community. And at the very, very least, I think just the ease in reporting and the ability for students, staff, well, not staff, staff cannot report anonymously, for students and parents to report anonymously, I think is, is worth at least the one-year trial with no commitment moving forward. The other thing that I wanted to just mention, I anticipate, which is related to HIV, but more globally, school climate and culture, to participate in a school climate survey this fall, which will include students, staff, and parents. It's through the School Climate Initiative, NJSCI. And I believe Rutgers is, is the organization, the institute that's facilitating this climate survey. I'll have more information to come definitely at our August meeting. But it's, it's free, it is, I don't want to say sponsored, but it's recommended by the Department of Education. And it looks like a really good opportunity for us. Questions on climate, HIV, anything in general before I move on?
Just one or two quickly. On the program itself that we're using, do you know if you can track and record not just HIV, but code of conduct?
We can, yes, yes.
Okay.
Code of Conduct, it's escaping me. There was four items that you can actually track. And again, it ties into our student.
And you can upload our policies and tie them directly to policy violations?
It's customizable.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
I'm assuming, assuming you assign who has access.
Of course.
To, okay.
All right, yeah, that was my other question.
All right, my second item, summer programs despite the heat are going well. A couple of our classrooms, because of the HVAC program, the HVAC construction right now, don't have air conditioning. It's warm, but they're battling through. They've got fans, they've got cold towels that they're using. I'm not really, not hearing student complaints, I can tell you that. Couple of staff here and there. But overall, it's very well-participated in. We've got our ESY, four ESY programs, including PT, OT, and speech. We have art, which is a five-week program. Ms. Herger's been doing some, some individual language arts support. Our Halfwood Camp was a hit. That was one week. We had at least, I think, 12 kids in there. They had a lot of fun. And we've got STEM Camp, which is also running this week in our innovation lab. For, we just talked about NJ CUSAC, about how we passed. Our construction update, all of the UN events in the building have now been installed. That actually happened within a week, which is pretty impressive. The gas line has been run to the building. You can see the, we now have the matching stripe in our parking lot to the rest of Stanhope and Byram. It's almost like a scarlet letter, I feel like, but, you know, we, we're going to see how that, that, how that develops throughout the summer. We're going to have to have work done where the oil tank is, the existing oil tank is. And I know that Frank's gotten some quotes to patch up as needed some of the asphalt in our parking lot. So, I'm not super concerned about that. All that's really left in terms of the HVAC is the ductwork and a lot of the finishing. The cabinets on the left and right of the UN events in most of the classrooms need to be installed. And in the newer section where we had the units in the classroom, there's now rooftop units. There's a, like a big gaping empty space that's either going to be turned into closet space or the, the one wall will be removed that will just kind of add some, some space in the classroom. Teachers are pretty excited about that. Questions on construction to this point?
It's looking good for everything closed up for September.
Yep, yep, making great progress. And our facilities team is making pro, great progress working around, you know, the construction. The rooms are going to be, we anticipate the rooms will be cleaned and the floors polished by the end of this month, knowing that there's still going to be some finishing work in there. There'll be some dusting, maybe some touching up, but we wanted to get that, at least the bulk of it done so that we weren't up against our late August deadline. The Ice Cream Social, the annual Ice Cream Social is going to be held on Thursday, August 29th at 4:00. That is the second of our two staff in-service days. It's sponsored by the HSA. And I, I would encourage all of our families to come out. It's an opportunity to walk through the building, see where your classes are, especially students who are new to the district, kindergarten coming in, even our new preschool coming in. And middle school students, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, will have an opportunity to get in the classrooms and try out their locker combinations, which is always a source of stress and anxiety at the beginning of the year. I did not quite make it to, to my report, but I wanted to also mention that we're going to be hosting a preschool orientation on August 22nd. It's a Thursday morning. That information and a letter to the parents of incoming preschool kids will be going out tomorrow via Genesis. I know Mrs. Sharpestein reached out to most of the board about a change in time for our August 28th board meeting. We're going to change from 7:00 to 5:00. Kathy, Kelly Mitchell, Kelly Mitchell, Kelly Mitchell will be coming in from New Jersey School Boards to work with the board through ethics training and hopefully some goal-setting. I recommend that if you have ideas for district goals that maybe that haven't been communicated, be a good idea to maybe get them to Matea, get them to myself, just that we have a good idea so we can start the discussion with, I guess, an end site in mind rather than starting from scratch.
The only thing I'll add to that, if you don't mind, is she also sent out a link for the board's self-evaluation. I told her I didn't think we had time to do enough of everything, but she said if we can participate, if we're able, you know, to review those results, she might be able to summarize it for us. So, you did see a link in your emails for it, so take a look.
I saw it, yeah.
That's all I have. Any questions?
Do you have a date for that to be done by?
Well, the meeting is the 28th.
But the self-board evaluation?
Same thing, same meeting.
You don't need it beforehand to have data by the meeting?
She said if you get it in the portal, anytime up until that week, she could probably put something together.
The week before, we, so notes, if we got it in the portal, we would have data for the meeting.
Like I said, that was while a priority, we want to get through ethics and goal-setting. And with only two hours, I don't know how quick we'll move. We'll see.
Not a question, just a comment. Just thanks to everybody for imagining and implementing the summer programs. I think kids are being offered a lot of wonderful opportunities here and it's been nice to see.
A lot of smiling faces. It's nice to not have an empty building in July. Oh, curriculum update, that's me still, sorry.
Keep going.
We had our, our math consultant, Jacqueline Colinari, who we've now used for several years, come in at the end of the month. She spent three days with most of our teachers who teach math. As most of you know, I've shared, the DOE put out that there would be a required math standards revision, which would result in a math curriculum revision that was to be done by this fall. Once we organized our consultant and organized our time and budgeted for them to come in, they had changed that to the following year. We, we learned during this work why they changed it to the following year. And it's because they don't have any of the actual learning goals that they're supposed to share with districts readily available for us to work off of. So with the exception of not having those learning goals, the standards are updated in the curriculum, language is all updated. We are going to wait on those learning goals because although we could have created them ourselves, it's, it's honestly best to use what the Department of Ed is giving you, right? That's, that's the target they want you to aim for on these standardized tests. So we might as well use what they give us. And then at the end of this year, we anticipate some language changes to our K3 report cards just because there's some separation, one large cluster in the standards is becoming two clusters. So it's just some minor tweaks there. I do have a language arts curriculum update that Ms. DiCataldo drafted for me that I'm just going to briefly read for you. And please stop me if you have questions, it's pretty robust. She wrote that the 2425 New Jersey Student Learning Standards for Language Arts revisions have been completed in grades kindergarten through eight. The revisions reflect the skills and knowledge students need to be successful in college, career, and life. The 2023 NJ Learning Standards prioritize the language domain to emphasize the critical importance of developing foundational reading and writing skills, specifically in grades kindergarten through five. These foundational reading skills include decoding and encoding words, analyzing word parts, reinforcing awareness of sound segments in speech and how they link letters, and developing reading accuracy, fluency, and comprehension while highlighting broad oral language skills. The foundational writing skills included are sound letter basics, advancing letter formation skills, stamina building, developing encoding and spelling skills using elements of grammar, syntax, and punctuation in sentence composition, and facilitating the development of writing skills and habits. Edits to ensure the fluency of the standards for the user have also been updated, delineating skills and knowledge related to both literacy text, literary text, and information text, including features and structures and types of writing. Recognition of the significant digital and virtual shifts in communication is also addressed. The newly revised curriculum looks to integrate companion standards for reading and writing in history, social studies, science, and technical subjects meaningfully for grade 6 through 3. So I know that was a lot to chew on, and the language arts curriculum definitely had way more changes to it than the math curriculum. Several of our teachers spent at least three or four days in working with Mrs. DiCataldo. And I think that you'll be happy with the results. So I anticipate the curriculum revisions will be available at our August meeting for the board to review and hopefully vote so that we can then get that onto our online portal for parents to review. Questions?
Will that go through committee first?
I will get it to the board as a whole, since we don't have committees in August. It needs to be approved before September. I'll make sure that you all have at least a couple of weeks to review any curriculum revisions that we have. I do not anticipate moving the math, the revised math curriculum forward for adoption because it's incomplete. The, the teachers will use, will review and use the revisions that we've made, but I'd rather wait for it to be complete before the board, you know, adopts that and we move that into our general curriculum. You did bring up one good question though, and I'd forgotten my report. There is a chance that we will schedule a policy committee meeting in August because I did get a policy alert just a week or two ago from Strassensky. And rather than waiting a whole nother month, I'd like to at least get a first reading in the books. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? All right, that brings us to negotiations.
Yes, I am happy to say that on tonight's agenda, we have a contract in place for you to vote on tonight. It's been approved by the NJEA, it's been approved by the local association. The committee approves it, looked at it, we're in agreement with it, and we are recommending that it be approved at tonight's board meeting. Some highlights, first of all, I'd like to thank the committee, Matea, Yakub, Steve, myself, and Dan, our BA. Couldn't have done it without any of those people. The teachers group had representatives from all their different groups and it was quite a crowd. I guess there was what, 11 or 12 of them when they were all there, it was quite a crowd. I have to say our discussions were lively at times and always good, always positive. Listening, coming back, both sides. In any negotiations, there are times it seems to go smooth and it seems at times it gets a little tight. But through all of that, we made it through. They, I believe, are happy with the settlement. We are happy with the settlement. I'm sure they would have wanted a little bit more. We would have been happy with giving a little bit less. But the way it worked out, both, both groups left happy. An important thing is that we got it completed before the end of July, which makes the opening of September possible for the all-staff to start on the new salary guides, which is a burden off of the business office. Some, some highlights of the settlement. It's a three-year contract. The teacher salaries were 3.5% for each of the years. The paraprofessionals, their salaries were, or their salary increase is 12% over three years. It's not, oh, it's not 4-4, it's a little bit more in year one because they were so low just to get them moving, but it's 12% over three years. The custodians were 3.75 for each year. Some other things that in the teacher's package, which was part of that 3.5, they got some additional monies for their graduate work reimbursement. There was some changes to longevity. The paras were able to go up 12 or 15% in their starting salary over the three-year period. So that was a nice jump for their starting salary. And that, they added a longevity step in that salary guide. There were many changes to the Schedule C, which is all of the stipends and payments, hourly payments that are made. And there's, there's headings, flat stipends, all went up, which include coaching positions, overnight trips, student club advisors, coordinators, anything to do with enrichments, math clubs, Lego clubs, chess clubs. And then there's the hourly stipends, that's class coverage, detention monitoring, homework, lunch detention curriculum. And I believe that those were the areas that funds were added to. And I believe that those were the areas that funds were added to. Yes, and training, staff, CST meetings. So we covered all of that. There were language changes, and the majority of the language changes came from when our attorney reviewed the contract at the very beginning to update everything that changed legally. You know, over the last three years, there were legal components that had changed that needed to be put in the contract. And the biggest area was in sick time, personal leave time, how that's treated and used now. That was a big change a year ago, eight months ago. That change came through, but now it's in, it's now part of our contract. We did ask for and get, even though our teachers do come to events at night, you know, the majority do, we do have, we were able to add a requirement that every teacher must attend one during the year. At some point, teacher has to come back and attend some after-school or evening event as it's happening, which we included as an HSA event also. Yes, yes. You know, the committee felt that seeing staff at events kids like, parents like, and it just helps build a little bit more community spirit with that in place. Matia, Yakub, any highlights you would like me to include that I left out?
No, I don't think so.
Anybody from the board have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the stipends, is it required that a custodian has to have a Black Seal license to run the boiler in the school?
I believe so.
Not anymore.
Oh, no, no.
Not anymore because, starting with, we just had the new boilers installed, and they put a cap on the number of BTUs that they can generate, which is under the requirement for our school to have somebody with a boiler's license here.
I was just wondering, because yours, Pat, you had to have one person in the building at all times.
Right. We did that, but with the change in the boilers.
Just a question.
That was actually a staffing, I want to say nightmare. It was a challenge, having the building staff whenever there was anybody in the building with somebody with that boiler cert, which is why, working with Iron Mountain, the HVAC company that's doing the project, we were able to come up with a solution so that at no point, I think it's 39 million BTUs is what it's set for, and you can't go over 40 million without somebody here that has the boiler cert.
Okay, yeah, good. I have my Black Seal license, that's why I asked that question.
Power increase, the 12%, how much of that, not like broad figure, is due to minimum wage increases?
It's actually not. So we brought them into compliance with minimum wage increases because that was effective already in the last contract. The goal of this contract was to bring them to a competitive level with surrounding districts and more of a minimum standard of living, and then to increase the bottom over three years to a minimum of $17 an hour. It's fantastic. So we can be competitive in hiring.
Also secures us in case if anything does happen in terms of minimum wage going beyond what we would expect.
Should it change?
Anyone else with questions? It was, I think it was a very, very good contract. Oh, just one comment. One of the things that we were pleased at was that when the salary guides came back from NJEA, we had asked them to consider improving our starting salary. And they did. And our starting salary, I got it right here. I wrote it down. This year, our starting salary this past September of '23, for the '23-'24 school year, was $57,455. In the last year of the contract, in '26-'27, it'll be $64,735, which is a great increase. Their top of the guide did not move anywhere near that percentage. Their current top of the guide, and that's BA only, this year is $82,025. In the last year of the contract, it's $84,500. So that the bottom, where we get most of our newer people coming in, it gave us a little bit of help in the hiring. Questions?
I commented a couple of months ago. It was a great learning experience for me. I appreciate the board for allowing me on the committee. Gil's experience will be missed, but Matia, we're in good hands with her. Bang-up job by the board. Yeah, good job, guys.
Any other questions? No? Gil, we're still with you at services.
Sussex Ed Services in the middle of their ESY program, which is very well-attended, very busy. We had a, our business administrator resigned in May, leaving July 1st. So she left. And as you know, with us trying to hire a BA, it's like no applications out there. We had, we had like one application that was viable, and that person was asking for like $160 to start, and that's just out of our total price range. So we ended up hiring a young man who has a master's in accounting, and he's going to take the course. There's courses that you can take over the summer if you have an accounting degree, that you'll be able to get the certificate for the BA. So he's in the process of doing that. He's very knowledgeable, things are going well there. The school next to us, where our school is located, right next to us is a mirror image of our building, BroadStep. They just went out of business. And now, the kids that are there are scrambling for places to go. So last week, we picked up four or five students from there. I told the superintendent today for her to inquire, I'm interested about purchasing the building. It's right next to us. We're overcrowded where we are. We can continue to grow if we had the room. We're just tied up in the building, we just can't grow anymore. So I have no idea what that kind of real estate costs. It's, I'm guessing.
Wonderful idea about that other building. Because you know the problems that we had
With the buses.
With the buses.
Yep.
Because of that building.
Yep.
I hope you guys buy it because it'd be better for everybody involved.
It'll help a lot of kids. Our, you know, our objective really is to make sure we're providing services for kids who need it for the whole county. The busing will make it work. We can add a driveway. You know, there's things and workarounds we can do. But other than that, we're doing well at Sussex Ed Service.
All right, so Board President's Report. So two things I've worked on over the last month. We had a New Jersey School Boards Association Sussex County Planning Committee for the new year coming in, which is basically planning the meetings, what we're going to talk about, what topics we think Sussex County Board members are interested in hearing about. So again, I encourage all of you who have any ideas, send them through to us. But this is basically putting together all the programming over the course of the year. And I know when Kelly comes in, she'll talk about they're creating a little friendly competition between all the boards up here to see who has the most attendees and which boards get the most certifications, and, you know, getting to 100% and going to the school boards in October. So they're just really trying to drum up people attending and coming to these events. They're both virtual and in-person. So hoping to put together some good meetings for the year, but anything you could think of that you want to know more about, send it on to me, and I'll make sure the committee that's doing the work gets it. And then the second thing is, we did have our first regionalization feasibility meeting on Monday night. It was in Byram School. There were two members from Byram, Lenape, Stanhope, and Netcon from each of the boards there. All four superintendents from all four schools were there, and three of the four BAs. Arch just wasn't there because he's the interim BA. The other BAs were all in attendance. We also had Mark Magyar and Donna Schneider, who are part of, you'll see a packet in front of you, the Rowan School Regionalization Institute. Mark Magyar was the same gentleman who was here back in 2019, last time we talked about this. He was part of Steve Sweeney's Policy Committee, directly for Senator Sweeney at the time. So when school regionalization discussions began, and there are all the major impediments we've talked about, they set forth through this Rowan School Regionalization Institute to start to change the laws. And so this meeting on Monday was really about, hey, what's changed and what can we do for you now for anybody interested in exploring regionalization? So what I want to share, and a lot of it is in this presentation that was back in February, which is why we gave it to everybody in hard copy. But the high-level takeaways are this. One, it is at no cost to any board. Okay, the grants pick up all of the costs for the feasibility study. In the past, you had a demographic study, a feasibility study, possibly a financial study. You had all this work to do, all the boards bore the burden of that cost. Now it is a singular study with four sections. There's a governance section, a finance section, the actual feasibility, which talks about structure and all the different options, and the demographics. So the demographic study we did five years ago is essentially expired. They'll redo it as part of this process. And the process of the study itself can take anywhere from about six to 10 months to actually have somebody do the study. There are options in who does the study. The highlights of that are if you use an institute of higher learning such as Rowan or Keene University, there's no need to go for RFP. If you want to use a private law firm or some other firm, then you have to go out to RFP the way the laws are written. So there's a lot of impediments that were removed to make this feasible. Some of the other things that I want to share, so in addition to everybody coming together and everybody being excited, kind of what does this look like and what happens next? So now we know, we know how to get it done. There's a very brief application, which is essentially three paragraphs about the districts themselves and, you know, that they're interested in studying regionalization. Again, there's no commitment to regionalize out of this whatsoever. At the end of the day, that's actually not up to any of the boards of education, whether or not we regionalize. All of that goes to vote. It's up to the towns completely. Right now, the boards all agree, you know, our job is gathering the information, bringing it back to our boards for discussion. So the key next steps that would happen here, and all four boards at the moment are aligned on these next steps. One is this discussion about it. And two is, the next step is a resolution that'll be on our agenda in August, which says, we want to go forward with the application and the feasibility study itself. In order for that resolution to pass, there's two parameters. One, at least two of the four districts must be a part of the application. All four districts are not required to be a part of the application, but all four districts will be studied, regardless of whether or not they choose to be a part of the application process. One of the key delimiters, though, is the, if the schools that choose not to be part of the application, they can still participate in the whole process. They may not be eligible for any incentives that come back. So the prior incentive was schools could receive back part of their S2 funding, right? S2 funding has basically sunset, so there's new legislation being drafted up about what some other incentives may look like. So they really want, you know, full participation. And again, even if boards choose not to participate, they still can join the committee. It's called the Steering Committee that directs and works with the folks who are doing the study to provide information. They can still participate in the whole thing. The other piece of this that I think is really important, especially given our discussions, is all of that work can be done in public sessions. The public can be invited, and it can be a very open and public process, the whole study. So the very next step for this board would be that resolution that says, we, this board, want to continue with the study and go ahead with the application and getting the feasibility study done itself. The other key takeaway that really hit home for me that I want to share, outside of this being a study about regionalization and all the parts of a regionalization which are in this packet, is even if we never regionalize, all the towns voted down, the study will tell us what our strengths and our opportunities are just as an independent school, because it will evaluate every facet of our school and our education, which I think is really valuable information, right? Netcon will get that information, Lenape will get that information, Byram will get that information, just by doing the study. It'll examine what every school is doing differently, what's working and what isn't, at every single grade level, which is fantastic. So the other part of the next step is to actually put together that steering committee, right? So the committee we approved last time was for Gil and I and Steve and our BA to go and have the conversation that we had. The next part is if we pass the resolution to be a part of the application process, is to actually develop the steering committee itself. The steering committee itself does not have to be limited to only members of the board. They shared the examples that in some places there's a community member at large who's part of that as well, or some other folks, because it can be an open and public process. So we can talk about that more and what we think that might look like, you know, if we agree as a board to move forward, to participate. The other thing I will share is, it is most likely right now that Netcon will be the lead on the application, and their BA will be responsible for the pass-through of the grants and the funding and everything that pays for this. They are open to having their BA do that work. We're just waiting for confirmation back from Lenape that they are comfortable with that particular position because that has to be stated in the resolution. We need to know that information in order to move forward. So I want to have a discussion, I want to answer questions. I did take, you know, four pages of notes, five pages during that meeting. There was a lot of information that came out. A lot of it is in this packet as well. So I do encourage everybody to take it and read it and understand what it works and what type of information that they gather. But the process of just the study itself is anywhere from six to 10 months. So it's not a tomorrow process, right? And then we can talk about, you know, what happens after the study or during the study if we move that far down the line.
To be clear, A, I think I probably missed it. I didn't know Byram did decide to partake. Okay. And then, given the gravity of what we're doing, I just want to make it very clear, even in terms of the steering committee, it's strictly for the feasibility study.
That's correct. Like I said, the steering committee and the boards can't actually vote to regionalize.
Yeah.
There's only two votes through this whole process that a board does. One is the one we're going to put on resolution for next week, which is to go forward with the study itself. And the second one is the vote for the referendum to bring it to the town down the line, when you're on the other side of the study, if every board agrees to do that. Only two votes.
And you mentioned that earlier. What if one of the three does not agree?
So we had a lot of conversations about that, right? So two of the four have to agree to the application, okay? If all three towns either don't go to the vote, or even if a town turns it down, they are still gathering information about that because we have a little bit of a unique situation in that the largest district here is actually Byram. In many cases, it's actually the high school because you have a bunch of send-receives. We don't have that. So Byram is actually the largest district. So the question is, if Stanhope passes it and Netcon passes it, we're still not a majority. But the way the law is written, it's unclear, is if two out of three pass, is it still considered a majority or not? So they owe us answers on what that vote looks like, but none of that precludes the study. That's all about the vote.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Yeah, and I may not have the answer, but I'll do my best.
So I understand ultimately it's going to go to, any regionalization, a final vote would be in the hands of the townspeople. Am I hearing correctly that if it got to that point and in a hypothetical situation that Byram and Netcon voted to regionalize and Stanhope did not, we would then be forced to regionalize?
Not necessarily forced to regionalize, and that's some of the clarification they have to give us. But what it could do is create a situation where we become a send-receiver at the high school. Yes.
I just want to say that it's very alarming that we don't have that answer at this point, and we're one meeting away from voting on this.
We're only one meeting away from voting on getting a study, not on that at all.
Not on that at all.
We're nowhere near that.
Before it goes to the town, it will go through the board.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's going to be a very important question to answer.
Well, the thing there is, if I may say, whatever's decided on has to be passed by all boards because we're all voting on the same regionalization. It can't be something for Stanhope and not the same for Byram. You know what I mean?
If Byram doesn't even vote to go to a vote, it's dead.
That part's, there are districts that put riders in there. I'll give an example. The one he used was rural district here in Warren.
Yeah, there are actually several of these going on right now. There are seven regionalization studies being done right now.
Just, I mean, I'm hearing, like, you know, it's six, eight months. Just, I mean, I I'm hearing like, you know, it's six, eight months, it's a long time. But it seems very realistic that a year from now, we would be at a point as a, as an entity, determining whether or not we're going to a public vote, which seems like an extremely short amount of time, given the amount of conversation that we've had as a board leading up to this, that we're saying foreseeably, in a year's time, we would be at a point of of voting whether or not to put this in the hands of taxpayers, and knowing that even if the Stanhope taxpayers come back with an answer that we don't want to regionalize, if the Byram and the Netcon taxpayers say that they do, we would be out of luck there.
Or or or, as Market said, you may have to wait a year and you can go out and re-vote.
But there's a lot of options at this point. And and we had a lot of discussion about that. And that's why I said, these are very good questions. So other examples included, there was riders in the agreements with all four boards that all four go or they don't go. So it doesn't even get to the point that you're talking about if all four don't agree to go forward, because none of us want to put any of us in that situation, right? We don't want that to happen. So that is an option in going forward in the agreement between the boards of education, right? The only thing we are going to ask for the resolution on next month, the end of next month, August 28th, is to go forward to get the study. Because again, remember, that study is going to tell us a lot about not just our district and what we're doing in the neighboring districts, but as a whole, and again, that's why I encourage everybody to read this, governance and structure, finance, educational opportunities, costs, taxpayer dollars is a huge one. There was one example he gave where, in the past, you had this, you know, assessment and enrollment apportionment, and that is all out the window now. The boards can decide what looks best through the financial piece of the feasibility study. They will structure that any way that you want it to see how the taxpayer may or may not be affected. Some of them that they did had zero effect on any town involved, right? So all of that is part of how this study needs to be done. These are, we don't have all these answers without doing the study.
I give a hypothetical scenario and do do the best that you can to answer, and I would understand if you're not able to. Steering committee will ultimately be once again in terms of the feasibility study, right? If we want to make it well-known and make it part of, I don't want to use the term stipulations, like an all or nothing vote, like all parties needed to agree. And this is that next step that Tom is discussing, right? All parties needed a greater regionalization or none. What leverage do we have to make that a point?
Present, present, the the thing that, the thing that's hard to visualize is there's not, there's not stopped at time. So when you get the feasibility study back, there's no time limit that says you have one month to come up with your plan. You could have a year, you could have 18 months. The idea is that you now have data to look at. All the communities get together and you look at the data. And it's like any anytime you work with a group like that, it's like a salary contract. The first time you get it, the first thing you do is you take it and you look at yourself, right? That's the first thing you look at. It's the same thing here. When you get the feasibility study back, you look at your financial, look how everything is. And then you sit down and you start looking at, what do we want educationally? What's our objectives? How do we want to organize it? What's the financials? The part that Matia just said, some of you may not fully understand it, is right now you can base the financing on assessed evaluation or number of students. Years ago, it was either or. Either you did the assessed evaluation, and that's how you got the money, or you did the number of students. State, after a while, said, okay, we're going to make that. You can do it, where you can go 50/50. Well, now, you can put that on a sliding scale. We did it, the first time we did this, we went and we did a trial run with our financials, and this is going back six years ago, and we were able to bring out a regionalization, because it ended up being like 22% of enrollment and the rest was assessed evaluation. That was the one that brought it to almost no change in your taxes.
At all, for any town.
Because you can do that. And the thing that people have to understand is that you just can't look at your tax bill today. You have to add it together, because there's no more regional bill. So when you look at your taxes, you got to add the regional district to the local district. And that's your tax bill for a regionalized district. All of that plays out at a table with people talking about set goals that the steering committee had, education, finance, structure. Are we going to end up with a middle school, no middle school? You know, how are you going to do this? How are we going to do busing? How are you going to do the the board setup, all right? How is that going to work? This, there's many, many things that go into it. But it's not that we got the feasibility study and next week we're going to go to vote. There's no time limit there.
I understand that, but hypothetically, we could be looking at a year from now, each respective board of education taking a vote to then go to a public vote. I mean, that seems very reasonable, which is, in my opinion, a very quick timeframe. Hypothetically, that could happen, especially if you're talking about a six to eight month timeframe for a feasibility study.
It's only for the study, not for all the discussions that come after you have the data. That's just for whatever entity you hire to produce a study, that's it.
We we have to wait till August to get our resolution in. We are on a rolling acceptance.
You still have to get the grant.
Till we get the grant. So we may turn it in in August, we may not get the grant till October or November to do the feasibility study. Then November starts that clock for six, eight, 10 months.
And they said some have been 12 or 18 months, depending on how much information.
Also depends upon, the the steering committee has input into things you want studied. So you may want to have something special studied. So you put, you put that in there, that takes time, the financing. You may want to look at regionalizing busing. That may be something people want to look at, that goes in, that's that's a plan. All those take time to do that, because you have outside experts in all of these areas. Then you get it back. So say you got it back in six or eight months. It has to take another six or seven months for that committee to all sit down and get four districts to agree to a plan.
And public input on all of that.
And public input at the same time, it's a long process.
It's not, not a tomorrow.
And I appreciate, and it seems it's an involved process, a lot of time, attention and effort, and all involving particulars of a discussion that are further down the road from the basic discussion of are we so unhappy with what we have? And I don't think this board has really had a strong conversation about that. I think we have a really nice balance of of localized schools for our pre-K to 8 population and a regionalized model and all the benefits of in in a high school building. There's a lot to be said for that transition that occurs from an eighth grade year to a ninth grade year, where suddenly your world is opened and you have new classmates to start your high school years. There's a lot to be said for being a municipality that has its own, a small municipality with its own small little school that, by and large, I think we're really proud of. I I I just don't think we've had those hard conversations, like, do we really want to go down this road? I just, I I stand by my my thoughts that our community really likes our school, and we have a really good thing going, and we're really running a risk of messing with the happiness of this town and the district. And taking into consideration that we know that there are board elections occurring between now and that, and and the timeframe after that. So a vote to start a regionalization study now could have implications that none of us are at the table for when a decision is now, is now at a point where we have to act upon the regionalization study that we voted for. I just don't think we're having enough conversations, and I don't think we're anywhere close to starting this process at our next board meeting.
Can I comment on that as well?
Go ahead, Jen.
Okay, so none of us have a crystal ball. So to Gil's point on, we're voting tonight to sign a three-year contract. If I looked back three years at where our funding was through the various S2 cuts, none of us knew when we'd done anything what our financial situation looks like year to year. You can only go with the information you have. I love our school, I love what we do, I love our town. But for me, the piece that I can look at is say, okay, I want to gather the information. The piece down the road, you're right, none of us might be sitting on this board. It could have all new members. But that, to me, is why it goes to the town for the vote. So it's not the people at the table expressing their personal opinion. Everybody that lives in this town has the ability to go on voting day and say, I want to move forward, I don't. Because the process is public, every member of this town should be encouraged, and I highly hope they do, come out and participate and gather the knowledge firsthand.
And and what I would add very quickly, and Yacub and Gil, you want to say something? We have the town involved in the strategic plan. We heard a lot of feedback about things, about educational opportunities for our children that we do want to change. This may provide opportunity to understand whether or not we have that capability. That's what we're looking for here and now. I don't think anybody is saying we're unhappy as a board, or happy as a board, or unhappy or happy as a town. What we're saying is, the obligation is to gather information to answer some of the questions that have even already been posed to us. They were posed in that strategic plan, right? There were elements of that, that we said, here and now, today, we don't have capability for that, right? So this will help us with some of that. And board members change every single year. Every year, there are two seats up on this board. So you're never going to be in a position where the same people who start a process are the people who are here to finish it, ever, right? So that's just a fact.
Some, we don't know what we don't know.
What don't we know?
We don't know what we're offering our kids is the best we can offer our kids.
Don't you think we can have a good conversation about that? Like, I mean, don't you think we can have a general conversation about what we, what we can't afford our kids right now versus what we can? And I'll go back to a point I made in our, one of our last discussions on this topic.
I let you talk, so let me finish. You don't know what you don't know. You're right, we can have that conversation. But in order to make improvements, you need a couple of things. You need money, and you need kids. If you want to run sustainable programs, you need kids. One of the advantages of regionalizing, it adds sustainability to programs that we currently can't offer, because we don't have kids. Number two, they're redoing the school funding formula now. Do you think they're going to add more money to school districts that are under 400? If you're, if you're thinking that, you're dreaming. My estimation is, when that funding formula comes out, it's going to be S2 all over. They don't want to have school districts under 500. They have all the statistics out there right now. Schools under 500 cost between 17 and 20% more to operate than schools over 500. And they don't want to waste taxpayer money on that. We think our little place is nice. I agree with you, but sustainable, I don't see that lasting over a long period of time. We, we join forces, we join, our, our joining of our three towns isn't a third the size of some districts that are right, they're not a, one-third the size of a Roxbury or a Mount Olive. We're still a tiny district. It's only 2100, I think it is, is the total, 2100 kids is the total.
It's 850, 300 and 300, right at the three schools, something like that.
Something like that, it's under 2000. It's still a tiny district in a tiny, small area of Sussex and part of Morris County. We're not, we're not, like, came out years ago, let's regionalize all of Sussex County, okay? I I taught, I taught in a county wide district, my first thought. It was wonderful, I'll tell you what. You had resources, you had money, you had stuff that nobody else around had. It was wonderful, but it wasn't for me.
Yacub, let me give you a chance to speak.
Yeah, and I would like to use comments I've heard, that I've heard both of you use. We don't know what we don't know, we don't know if it's trending that way. The Stanhope is a gem, right? But this information, because I'm not seeing past this, that's what we've agreed upon, right? Gather the information, might very well support your your case. We don't know, and I'm not saying you have a firm stance on it, and I'm not trying to assume anything, right? But this information might very well make the case, regionalizations not in our best interest, because there's going to come down to two things. There's going to be raw data that could be objective at times, and then public opinion. And as long as we're giving the public ample time to have meaningful conversations, I am more than comfortable with moving forward. And that's why, unfortunately, I wasn't at the vote. I didn't make it clear last time I was here the way I would have voted, right? But this information might very well support one or the other. But I'm not, I would never walk into an regionalizational conversation assuming what the state's going to do, as they've proven to us, curveball. They don't even know what they're doing.
Yeah, and I will say, the key is it's objective information. This is an outside entity, it's an outside entity who comes in and does the study for us. We may tell them the things we think we want to understand about our communities, but all of the information is objective.
And to show you my fairness in it, and I I very rarely interject personal opinion while I'm up here, since I've been on the board, I haven't, right? My wife's opinion on this, don't even get me started. She'd be one of the first people here screaming at the top of her lungs. But as a board member, I need to do what's best for all students and get the information. And then she can yell at me if I feel differently than her, right? But she also voted for me, and we're going to have to come down to that. And I believe this is going to take enough time where it's going to overlap at least one of our elections. It's going to take time. But it's, we're at that first baby step, and I don't want to say, like, kill each other just yet.
No, and we have an unknown piece, and and in my mind, I can't not think about it. The state, for a long time politically, has pushed for regionalization. And it's gotten voted down more than once at the state, and they still, their political people still voting to push it back. What I like about getting the information is I feel like that, I'm armed with something. I'm not showing up to whatever fight the state is throwing my way with zero information. I don't know in the end, I can't honestly say whether I am for or against. I mean, I have my personal opinions based on what I've seen over the years, but until I have the actual facts on what it looks like to combine all the towns, I don't know. But I'd rather know and then make an informed decision on the next step after that than than not, because nothing stops the state at any point from coming to all of us and saying, politicians voted, oh, sorry, you don't want us to do this? Well, we voted in the positive, now you're stuck with it. And maybe we're going to ship your kids up to Vernon and ship the Vernon kids down to Stanhope.
Every state outside of New Jersey is regionalized.
Well, they're all, most of them are countywide.
And then you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're like the lone state.
We are, look, we have, we have 586 school districts in the state.
We're always in the top three.
We, we're always, we're always number one or number two, not even top three.
And it's why I moved to Stanhope.
Yeah, which is the defense of our local control.
I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to do anything to disrupt the educational.
But, go ahead.
Couple points, in turn, you mentioned a couple of important factors, one being money. And I I think that's a huge factor. And I I think it's important to kind of reflect upon the fact that we passed a referendum when we went to our our tax base and on our population, and he supported our schools with the funds we said we needed to run them. That hasn't been the case in all districts. And that's an important consideration. So to to have an assertion that regionalization would automatically result in a more secure financial future and better opportunities for our kids, I I don't think that that's necessarily true. In terms of having, you know, an outside party, I'd like to learn a little bit more about what was stated about our options with who does the study. It was stated that that there have been some political aspects to these regionalization studies and and even funding, you know, replenishment based upon if you do a regionalization study and you regionalize, you may have certain funds restored.
Incentives, incentives. Those were incentives to to study regionalization, not political biases, right?
I didn't, the word political was used, and I think certainly.
I usually use political as in what they vote on in Trenton to say whether or not the people we have put into office, whether or not they make the decision there versus towns. That's the only time I put that word out there.
But certainly, this point has been made, that New Jersey's governmental entities have shown interest in regionalization.
Oh, absolutely, it continues to come to legislation.
If we're going forward with a study, the board should should choose to go with an individual, a group completing a study that's far removed from the state and not one that's identified by the state as a primary supplier of those studies. I really do think that's critical. If we're looking for for just the facts, and I think that would be an important step for the board to take, is to seek a study provider that is truly an independent entity.
So wait, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. You're saying, for example, if we went with Rowan University, that you're, I don't know whether I want to say opinion or view or whatever, your standpoint is that they have some kind of political bias to do in doing the study?
I'm not saying a political bias, I'm saying that that the state has, I'm not trying to use political in that sense, but that as far as like this negative connotation. The state, as has been relayed, has shown interest in having districts regionalize, and the state has identified a group or two to do these studies. To me, there's a little bit of a conflict there, where the state has shown an interest in regionalization.
To do the studies, the state has not identified them.
But this, you could provide some clarification then on on the different types of groups, because I thought you said that if we...
Institutes of higher learning. Institutes of higher learning. Keene University has an institute that does this. Rowan has an institute that does this. If you go from a purchase, strictly purchasing perspective with an institute of higher learning, you don't have to go to RSP. If you want to use a private entity, not an institute of higher learning, you have to go out for RFP because those are purchasing laws. It doesn't have to do with anything with political input into the process. And there are a couple of law firms out there, I guess, that do the study. What I will tell you is, most of them have, for example, at least two, have a former commissioner of education in their, in their groups because it attracts people, because you want people who know education and know education in New Jersey. So former Commissioner Hespe is on one, and former Commissioner Davies is in another one. One happens to be in one of the institutes of higher learning, one happens to be at a law firm. Right? So I, you'll absolutely be able to, that, that steering committee talks about who would they select and why, and whether or not they go to RFP, and again, all of that can be part of a public process.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with what Tom said. We can't be naive to the reality of how politics work, right? And I have solace knowing that at the end of the day, it will come down to a community, not even just the board. Right? It's going to come down to what community feels best as a whole. But the information we're going to get cannot be skewed or biased, and I think that's not what you're alluding to, but that, that's the reality of what happens sometimes when you do studies in general. So who's doing the study will be important.
Absolutely.
But higher learning institution, okay, great. You know what I mean? Um, yeah, thank you. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm cool with that.
Just, I, I just want to clarify the money piece, because you threw that back at me a couple times. Let's be honest, you passed a $6 million referendum by 75 or 100 votes in this town with no tax increase. Remember that. They came out and voted. Didn't cost them a dime. I'm not sure what happens if you go out there and say, we're going to vote, and this is going to cost you $500 a year. I'm not sure how the town votes by that. So saying this town supported that, there's a reason why, because we were smart. And we didn't want to double banks or taxpayers. But if you went out with a $6 million budget and it raised their taxes five to $700 a year, you're going to get a different turnout and a different vote. And that's, I'm not, I've been in this town when that, when we didn't pass a school budget for five years. When you could vote for a budget, and that's when busing went out. I was here. I was at the meeting. Busing went out because it added $50 a year to your tax rate. And it went out. I'm not saying anything about the voters, but you can't say that this town will support any referendum you put out there because they were so willing to spend their tax dollars. I don't think that's a fair uh, vision of our people. I think you're going to have to work it. I think you're going to have to work this as a regionalization process. I, I don't see, I'm going to go out on a limb, I don't see a regionalization costing less. I don't.
My concerns aren't financially based, first and foremost. Of course, that's a consideration, but you know, I'm not, I'm not stating anything about our, our town base and our population other than the fact that they passed a referendum, and that isn't the case everywhere. I, I do look at that STEM lab, and I do believe if we were regionalized, we wouldn't have it. I truly believe that.
That's where we disagree. We would have had it longer ago.
Here's the great thing. Jen said it before. The whole purpose of this, so we don't have to deal in hypotheticals. I would like to know what I'm, what I'm going into, and that's why I think this, this study is a great idea. My personal beliefs, I haven't formed an opinion yet because I want this information for that. But hypotheticals will kill us if we keep doing that between now and the next 10 months.
Personal beliefs. We're all here for a reason, and because we have beliefs, right?
We care about the township and the student.
I'm in a different situation because I've had two kids through here, and I still have one here than somebody who has their kids just started here. We all have different opinions about what their experiences were here based on our role as parents. This isn't about that. This is about our role as board members and getting information that we believe could produce better educational opportunities for our kids. It could. If it doesn't, it's dead in the water.
One way or the other, it's going to show us something.
It's completely free information. There's no obligation to act. And I guess that's why I'm struggling with the, the hesitancy to move, right? The other three boards as of Monday are still on board. They're all having these discussions. Net, uh, Net Kong had it at an open working meeting last night. Byram is supposed to be having it tonight. They have their board meeting tonight. I'm not sure when Lenape's is. Right? But they're all, okay, they're all having this exact discussion and having these difficult conversations, which are really good and healthy, right? So when, when you want to say we haven't had time to talk, we, we're talking now, we talked last time we put something on, right? I'm not, I, I want to produce as many forums to talk as possible, but still keep in step with getting things out there so we get the information out there and get the information to the public so that we're not dealing in hypotheticals. Because, and, and Gil goes back way more than I do, but as far as I know, we've been dealing in these hypotheticals since the 90s because we never got to the next step. Right? I wasn't here in the 90s. I was still in West Orange.
One, one of the things that Matia brought up when we had the meetings before regionalization, and the community came out and talked about what we do well here and what we don't. A big factor that kept coming up, that even with our referendum, we can't solve because we're tiny, is our inability to have certain program choices, our inability to have teacher changes. I love our middle school, okay? Love all sorts of things about it. But I've seen over the years, the downside of that too. If you have a child, for example, that doesn't mesh well with the history teacher or the science teacher, because we have one. They now have three years of one, and that goes for the teacher too. Like, I see downsides there. But that said, for me, I want to gather the information to see what the pluses are if we were bigger, what the, what, what are the cons if we're bigger? I'm sure there's columns on both sides. I just want to get the information. I don't know where it's going to shake out, but not having the information makes me feel like there's this unknown. And as a board, when we make decisions every month with future unknowns, and there's always going to be an unknown, but we have an opportunity here to me to just gather information.
Sure, I appreciate that. I certainly appreciate everybody's opinion. It certainly seems like, like everybody wants to move forward. I have concerns, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen. I mean, just my final thought, my contribution, my final contribution would just be that, you know, looking at, at districts that are bigger, uh, that may be pre-K-12 districts and the opportunities that could be afforded. There's four of them within five miles of here. People choose to live in Stanhope knowing that it's a tiny little district that has a regional high school. And I think people are happy that.
They may not know that, like you have young families moving in who don't have kids. They may not know that.
I think the majority, I think the majority of people who move into Stanhope understand that they're.
I, I moved to Stanhope and thought I was never going to have children. It wasn't in our cards. Fast forward, I have two.
So if I could finish the point, I, I think the majority of people who move into Stanhope with the intention of raising kids here, or who move into Stanhope and later end up having kids here, know that they're either moving to town or staying in town with an understanding that their kids are going to go to a small district with all of the pros and cons associated with it, and then go to a regional high school. And they could move five miles in any other direction to have other options.
And it's a fair point from your perspective. I wish I personally wasn't mine. I had no idea what a regional high school was. I didn't know that concept till I came to Sussex County and had children. I grew up in West Orange. There was no such thing in anywhere near me of a concept of regionalization, right? So you have both sides of that coin. There are, there are people who also don't know that. But again, that, that, the public, hopefully when they come and they're involved, all of those conversations and those votes are up to the public. And, and we're just, this is simply to lay out possibility and get facts. That's it. That's what the ask will be in August. The resolution to bring it back to a full circle will be identical for all four boards of education, right? To the point we made earlier, there was hesitancy before because we weren't sure if all four were in or were out, right? All four showed up at that table. That means something to me. That means we have the obligation to have this conversation and to proceed in kind and in style. That's what we've agreed to prior to now. They were all there. All four superintendents sat in a hot gym for two hours on Monday night. Right? That means something.
The only time I'll hit a panic button is if it's decided that if all the townships vote and one votes no, and they'll be forced in, I would like that to be well known and clear. Now it's different, different, okay, and, and it's different, there's incentives that are, okay, fine.
Yeah, like I said, that's part of this whole study.
Hit a panic button and say.
Because that question was asked in that meeting, and that answer that I gave you was given. That situation is one that was examined, right? So we would know that, and we just wouldn't go to the vote. That would be part of this study if that situation could occur. Right now, Wallkill, Hamburg, Franklin, Augsburg and Hardeeston are in the same talks, right? They're going through it too. Our neighbors right here are all, they're, seven districts in this state, seven studies in this state at one time hasn't happened ever. We've had one regionalization in this state in how many years?
About 100.
Yeah, that's it. One in this degree, because there were so many impediments. Now they've been removed, and school boards and communities are saying, let's understand what that looks like. Our neighbors right here are saying, let's understand what that looks like. Is there something else? Right? That's all. Carmen, you've been quiet. Anything? You don't, I'm not putting you on the spot. Just making sure you have an opportunity.
Tom said about the people coming to, to Stanhope to bring their kids to the school because of the high school. I bet you if we take a survey of the amount of people in the last year that has come to Stanhope, mostly of, most of whom are seniors or people that don't have children. Because otherwise, our district would be more than 300 and 10 students.
Declining enrollment.
If they were actually coming to Stanhope for the school. That, that's the only thing I want to say.
I just really, I hope we're not making assumptions. Because I'm a prime example of exactly that demographic, right? And those are the people I see. Those are the people I've been hanging out with.
Absolutely, and that makes sense.
But I'm not assuming my familial status is everybody's. Ultimately, if it ever got to the town, excited for that conversation, right?
But that's why everybody gets the vote, right? So that everybody can vote their own conscience and their own choice.
You know what I mean?
They got to vote their situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Are we okay to move on? Comfortable, everybody? Yes? Okay to move on, Tom? Again, I want to make sure we have ample time for conversation.
No, I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to express my thoughts.
We're in no hurry. We got a fan. I'm good. I mean, it's pouring out. Yeah, and it's pouring. We can talk. Okay, that brings us to public session number one, and we have no public. So, we will move past that. Travel and workshop reports, there was one. Questions, comments? Okay. That brings us to minutes for approval. Agenda items one through three. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Uh, this is a voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any no's? Abstentions? Carries. Administrative action items one through six, motion please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, give everybody a minute to go through it. We've talked about. And number six is the big one. That is improvement, approving the contract. So I just want to make sure everybody, any more questions on the negotiations contract, on the labor contract? None? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Congrats, guys.
Yes, that's a, that's a, that's a.
Thank you for everybody's hard work.
That's a great thing there, right there.
Policy, motion please?
Motion.
Second.
One item, second reading. Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Education, one through four, motion please?
Move.
Second, please.
Second.
Questions, comments? Hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes, motion is carrying.
Personnel action items one through nine, motion please?
Motion.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? Give everyone a minute to finish reading. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Business services, one through 18. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Give everybody a minute to go through it.
Um, could I just speak to number nine real quick?
Sure thing. Thank you.
When you were originally sent to the agenda, uh, the second part of number nine uh, said that we were refusing Title III funds. However, just yesterday, uh, Mrs. Walsh, the Net Kong superintendent, reached out to me asking if we would consider joining a consortium with them and Mount Arlington. Uh, so just so you know, if a, a district is awarded funds less than $10,000, you are not able to accept them unless you're able to group together with other districts totaling an amount greater than $10,000. I can't explain the sense that it makes. It's just the way that it is. So between us, Net Kong and Mount Arlington, our Title III allocation is greater than $10,000. Therefore, we can form a consortium, um, and work together so that we can receive that money. So ultimately what that is, it's just under $4,000 that we wouldn't have gotten 24 hours ago that we will now get. And that's, and that's directed towards, uh, um, students and families who are learning, uh, English as a second language.
Yep. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please. Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carrying.
All right. New business. Anybody got new business before the board?
We can make some up.
All right. Old business?
Yeah, I just want to bring up what I brought up at new business last meeting in terms of some type of, uh, uh, placard or, uh, something to represent the board that was in place at the time when the referendum was passed. Um, as you see when you enter our halls now. And, uh, if we decide to go forward, I like to do it before Gil leaves us. How long you been on the board, Gil?
On the board, 15 years.
15 years? Yeah, I think you earned it, buddy. So I, I just want to keep the conversation going. I don't really know what the next step would be or what we'd want to do. I know we mentioned something in terms of the STEM lab or Innovation Lab.
I think it's a good idea. It's always good to have recognition for people that have put most of their, their time into the school.
I agree.
As I said last meeting too, right, I'm happy to take direction from the board. Um, you know, so I, I don't have an opinion one way or the other. Um, but if you guys come together, and I, whether, you know, STEM lab, full referendum, whatever you guys think, uh, we can certainly start looking into options and quotes and sign companies and all that kind of stuff.
You know, has there been any thought, or are there separate things? And once again, I think it's important, the, the people that were at the board at that time, beyond that placard. But have we ever thought about what we're going to name the Innovation Lab?
Innovation Lab is currently the name. Are you talking like name it after someone or something?
Maybe somebody who's been on the board for 15 years.
No, 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 no. It's an innovation.
Call it the Gil Room, or.
Innovation Lab, please.
Throwing out ideas.
I don't need my name anymore.
I think 15 years isn't something we should balk at. I think 15 years isn't something we should balk at.
Well, how do we do this? If anybody has ideas, send them to me and to Steve, and then we can talk about them at next meeting and bring them out for like a straw poll vote.
Thank you.
Any other old business?